Is everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
It's coming into order. Time 4:08.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo. Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina. And Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We do have a call.
Great.
Motion to excuse absent members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're passed, they're are excused. Okay. Pledge allegiance?
Yep.
Luis?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today asking for your guidance as we proceed with the matters of business at hand. May your glory and peace fill this meeting, as these are our plans, but it is your plans that prevail. For this we pray. Amen.
Right, under proclamations, due to unforeseen circumstances, we'll be skipping A. And we'll be moving on to B, proclamation proclaiming October 23rd is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have Clara Chapa and Ruby Tanguma here from DHR.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's an honor to gather here amongst the City of FAR's council and its constituents to shed light on breast cancer, a cancer that affects the lives of one in eight women in the U.S. By designating October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, DHR Health and the City of FAR are showing their commitment to raising awareness about the disease and their commitment to encouraging women to be proactive in their health and to get the proper screenings. DHR Health is helping uninsured women in our community by offering a $99 3D tomography mammogram promotion that will run for the rest of the year. This technology provides 40% more accuracy than other mammogram screenings, and we encourage women to take advantage of this offer and the state-of-the-art technology that DHR Health provides. Thank you once again for your support and for helping DHR foster awareness about breast cancer and all those women who are affected.
Young ladies.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ruby Tanguma.
Okay, and what do you do?
Patient navigator.
Patient navigator. Okay, so you navigate patients, I guess?
Yes.
Alright. You want to tell the public what that means?
So we actually just help the patients, guide them through any, you know, burdens that they're going through in reference to like transportation, financial services, or any type of resources that they're needing assistance with. That's where we come along with them.
Okay. It's interesting. Couple of months ago when I was training in medical school, it used to be one in 11 people, now it's one in eight females. So it's, it's interesting, it's getting, it's unfortunate. Well, thank you for being here and thank you very much for the community.
Thank you for having us.
So, I'm just gonna read this out for you guys, okay? And then we'll come up and take a photo, if you don't mind. So whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, and whereas according to the Center of Disease and Prevention, CDC, breast cancer is the second most common cancer among women. And whereas increasing the public's knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment can save lives. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths from increasing education and regular screening. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a worldwide annual campaign in October involving thousands of organizations to highlight the importance of awareness, education, and research. And whereas this October, as we display pink ribbons or pink clothing to raise awareness, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those currently battling the disease, friends and families of those diagnosed, those patients diagnosed, and applaud the efforts of our medical professions, all professionals, and researchers working to find a cure. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, texted by virtue of the authority vested in me on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim October 2023 National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And when this were of, I here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on this 23rd day of October 2023. It's done right now. Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, you wanna come up here real quick? And see.
Yolda, do we have anybody for our public testimony? Public hearings?
No, nobody? Okay.
Alright, moving on to item five, City Managers' Report, item 5A. Submissions of Sales Tax Collection Report for October 2023. Seven percent increase compared to last year, 2.16% year-to-date true growth. Got to let you hear if you guys have any questions. Good. Alright, item 5B, Submission of Fourth Quarter 2022-2023 City of FAR Investment Report. Again, information's in your packets, if you guys have any questions, got to look and answer.
Okay.
Alright. Item 5C, Submissions of Property Tax Collection Report for September 2023. We met the 96% collection rate.
Good.
Next item under, uh, city events, item 5D. At this time, I'm gonna call our police chief up to talk about our Crime Stoppers, how awesome they are.
No, no, we're good. Uh, good afternoon, everyone, Mayor, Commission. Uh, first, just, um, on behalf of the Crime Stoppers Organization, just want to thank you for your time and support for this acknowledgement today. Texas Crime Stoppers Organizations are commonly based partnerships that include citizen and law enforcement personnel. We work together for the common goal of reducing crime. Our FAR Crime Stoppers is composed of dedicated volunteers making it an effective tool in preventing and solving crime. Today, who we have here is, we have Gloria Mendoza, she's the president of our FAR Crime Stoppers. We also have Janie Areando, who's a member of FAR Crime Stoppers. We have Officer Chris Hernandez. Uh, we have Sergeant Garcia, and we have Laura Lenteria, which is also a part of our Crime Stoppers. This year's FAR Crime Stoppers was well represented at the 34th Annual Crime Stoppers Conference held here locally earlier this month in McAllen. And today, we were here to recognize the team as FAR Crime Stoppers received this year's Productivity Award for Greatest Dollar Recovery from Cities With a Population of 75,000 to 100,000. Uh, that's one award that's awarded for one city throughout the state of Texas. And this year, throughout the population that we have, I think we're almost hitting close to 100,000 already when we come out the next time, but we did receive a Productivity Award and just wanted to acknowledge the efforts that we've had throughout the year. I also want to bring up, uh, Ms. Mendoza, just for a few words on behalf of Crime Stoppers.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Gloria Mendoza, I am the Secretary and PR Representative with the FAR Crime Stoppers. I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here and the Crime Stoppers the opportunity to serve the City of FAR by making this great city a safer place to live. Thank you.
So, what is she holding right there? What is that she's holding?
It's a Perdido Award that we get from the state of Texas. So every year, all Crime Stoppers throughout the state of Texas are given an award. It's only one award from the, from 75,000 to 100,000, and this is where we're going to capture the work. And it is the recovery award, so that means it's recoveries that we do not only from our projects or illegal drugs, but also from property that we recover, perhaps a stolen vehicle or car, or somebody that calls in a tip that was relatively related to us, recovering that, it's documented, and we have the most throughout the state of Texas.
Well, congratulations. Like your hat. That's good. Good job, ladies. Make sure you keep these guys in line. Good job. Put it to their eyes. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we're gonna call up Yudi to go over the city events of interest.
Good afternoon, Commission, Mayor Yuri Gonzalez, Office of City Communications Director for the Record. The following flyers you're about to see on the screen, this is just a reminder for our public, our community, some of the events that are approaching. We have many events throughout the holidays, of course, but these are just the events in the next two weeks. So I'm not sure if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, Kimberly Mendoza with our Development Services, she actually had a proclamation for National Community Planning Month. So this flyer that you're seeing is still part of that initiative. Friday would be the last day where her and her staff meet in City Hall First Floor, helping our community. Um, this is for people that want to start a new business and may have questions, planning and zoning, permits, annexations, how to use their account, Exela. So everything regarding Development Services, we are here to assist. So the last event is this Friday. Trail of Terror. A Trail of Terror, the name says it all, right? So this has become a signature event in the City of FAR. This is amazing, this is a production that everybody works very hard in, you know, having a good spook for our community every year. This is kicking off this Friday, so everyone that's going to attend at this point should have their, their tickets. It's a free event, but it's a ticketed event for logistic purposes. So we already passed out at least 900 tickets. There's three different slots for people to attend. So we'll be doing 7:30, 8:30, and 9:30 PM from October 27th through the 29th, as the flyer states. Um, we also have our event coordinator, Vanessa Soto, if you have specific questions on the logistics. We're expecting a great turnout, we know people are really excited, we have really long lines when these, um, tickets were ready to be distributed Friday the 13th this October, so we know we're gonna have a great turnout. Any questions regarding Trail of Terror?
No?
No, awesome. Trunker Treat, very similar. This initiative is done by our FAR Police Department, and so they will be getting ready to distribute candies in their front area and Police Department. And they do this every year, we really encourage our community to come out. This is happening on Halloween Day, which is October 31st. This falls on a Tuesday from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Awesome. Any questions regarding this PD event? No? Awesome. So once again, all of these flyers are on our social media sites. This is also on our website, and if there's any questions, they can send us a message or call us. Now we're moving on to a video. This is an initiative that took place a couple of weeks ago. There was a core team that was selected through Mayor's administration, and these are the folks or, you know, the directors working really closely with the IT Department when it comes to the broadband project. A couple of months ago, we actually had visitors from Kiowa. This is a Kiowa tribe out of southwest Oklahoma, and I'm gonna let you see the video just so you can have an idea of what we've been working on for the past couple of months, and if there's any questions after this video, we'll also be here. I want to call that group that's been working really hard with Jose, so Jose, can you join us? Cindy, Michael, Melanie, Jamison, I'm not sure if I'm leaving anyone out. So, um, if there's any questions after the video, they can help us answer anything.
What started as a special visit to the City of FAR quickly grew into a bond of friendship. The Kiowa tribe traveled more than 1,500 miles from Hobart, Oklahoma to our border region. Kiowa, origin and historic meaning, the principal people to the tribe. The tribe is working to close the digital divide in Hobart and surrounding communities in southwest Oklahoma, and ultimately create and offer affordable broadband internet services similar to tinfar.net.
It's been very eye-opening, to say the least. I came here hoping that we would learn how you guys did it, bring yourself a smart city, going from the worst connected city in the United States, right? And then taking initiative through your leadership, primarily the mayor, to lead the way and turning that around.
City of FAR's Mayor, Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez, and his administration paid the Kiowa tribe a visit in Oklahoma. The Kiowa tribe even held a special welcome kicking off the start to a press conference.
As a leader within this region of what can be and what can be done when we look at improving and establishing an effective IT system.
That conference focused on broadband expansion and showcasing their culture and traditions. Mayors, state representatives, and community leaders from across Oklahoma attended the conference.
I'm, I'm excited that Chairman Spotted Bird has organized the meeting today. Uh, I think it's fantastic that we had the turnout that we did from all over southwest Oklahoma, different leaders in different areas. Uh, I think it's fantastic that he did that.
Well, I was excited that, uh, almost everybody that got invited showed up, because that shows a need and a common interest here in southwest Oklahoma to turn our economy around by focusing on 21st century opportunities in technology and smart city concept is just the start of that.
The conference ended with the signing of a memorandum of understanding by Kiowa Chairman Lawrence Spotted Bird, reflecting FAR's commitment to the Kiowa tribe, solidifying collaborations for future broadband projects.
We know that this is a very important project for you, as it was for us when we first started it. We knew that education was the best way to, you know, put level ground for everybody, so everybody has an opportunity, just like your residents deserve as well. They need to be in touch with the world, they need to have access to education, public safety, and commerce as well. And what better way to do it than to have your own, in your footprint, a broadband project? And we're excited to be able to help you achieve what we've been able to achieve, and also many other prosperous things going forward.
They wanted to learn a little bit of some of the projects that the city does and on, uh, planning and strategies as well as broadband.
The future is bright. The City of FAR and the Kiowa tribe are committed to the journey ahead, and ultimately creating a level playing field for everyone.
I hope that really puts everything into perspective and answers most of these questions. Um, we've been working really hard, Mayor, you've been working really hard with Chairman Spotted Bird, with the entire Kiowa tribe, and they're very excited, they're very, they feel honored working with you. And as a token of appreciation, as an honor, and just, you know, a tradition they, they do with everybody they work with, they've actually, um, they have a gift for you, all the way from southwest Oklahoma. Ylda, if you want to present this to the mayor. This is handmade by the Kiowa tribe, and it's a symbol of friendship and collaborations.
And it's all pretty.
And you won't see this now, but later in our agenda, the MOU, so you can sign, so we can also provide that in, in the video, your, your portion of the MOU sign in.
Okay.
Do you want to mention anything?
Mayor, Commission for the Record, Cynthia Garza raised. Cynthia Garza raised Director of External Relations. We had a fantastic visit with the Kiowa tribe. Uh, we saw that there were a lot of similarities that they have and that we see not only in the City of FAR, but also along the border, the border of Texas and Mexico as well. At the end of the day, what is important to us has always been our students and making sure that they were connected in every way possible. And they have the same needs that we do. It starts with the students, you know, in terms of them building a future, not only now, but, but really what their future will look like 10, 15 years down the road. And so it was amazing that they were able to grab not only their elders from the tribe, but also to have members from their state governor there, from their state government there, along with other mayors from other surrounding communities. The goal for them is to provide more of a coalition. Uh, because they're so spread out, they're looking at doing more of a coalition with those surrounding communities. And so we were able to really provide a lot of insight. Uh, they were in awe with what our OSCE department headed by Melanie has done in terms of strategic planning and how we have now become a data-driven city. And so that's one thing that they're, they're very much striving to become as well. Uh, in terms of the opportunities, when it comes to building a network like FAR, the opportunities are endless, just the way they are for, for our community as we started this project. So we're ready to engage with them, we're ready to see where this partnership can take us, and, uh, we're ready to see a community that's similar in ours just have success, because it is a special population that sometimes is unforgotten, is forgotten. And because of that, we want to make sure that, that they're not and that they have the same capabilities as we do.
Great. Well, it's, uh, it's very nice, I mean, when they visited us, I was surprised that they were from Oklahoma, and let alone, I mean, uh, never Americans. I mean, I actually have never really dealt with that population ever in my life, so it was, uh, an eye-opener for me. And I think what they were most impressed with, to be honest, it wasn't the fact that, uh, that I was there or the commissioners or that we were involved, it was the fact that, uh, they saw, the commission to be aware of, I mean, what they saw was our, our staff, I mean, what they saw was our team. And from Melanie to Cindy to Jose, you know, all you guys, what they really were impressed by was the fact that, how did, how did you guys do it? How did you guys come together and, uh, address this, uh, problem in south Texas? And what he, what Chairman told me afterward was the fact that he was most impressed with the fact that we were so cohesive, and that everybody seemed to be and is in alignment to what is the best interest of the residents, and, which is what he wants for his tribal area. He, that's what he wants. And to be sure that everybody gets a great opportunity, and he just couldn't believe that we're, uh, we're not a huge city, right? We don't have the resources that major metropolitan areas such as, you know, San Francisco others have, but despite that, you guys have been able to make it work and beyond, and a great partnership with PSJ as well. So, make no mistake, they were, they're very, very, very excited to have met you guys and meet your staff and everybody who works with them, because they were echoing those remarks when you guys came back, because he called me and he wanted to let, to let me know how wonderful it was to meet with you and how impressed their state reps and their mayors and their staff were, and speaking to you guys as a team that represent the City of FAR. And, uh, so you should be very proud of yourselves, and so I just wanted you guys to know that, they hadn't told you. We're very proud of you. I know you, you do it from the heart, you do it because that's what you guys believe in, just like Team FAR does, everything. And see, now other people outside the area see it as well. So congratulations to you guys. Alright? Can we, can we, can we get a picture of this? With you guys?
Can we get a picture?
Yeah.
Yes. There's a story behind the drum, but... The drum travels with everybody home. It may or may not. Okay, there's one more video, and it's a wrap as, as far as the City Managers' Report. Our Avocado Fest, we couldn't have this meeting and not bring up the success of Avocado Fest this Saturday. I believe the last number we got was close to 7,000, 7,000? Is that correct, Dr. Flores?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So, very successful for a first-time event. We have a quick recap, so let's go ahead and see that.
That's great.
Avocados are everywhere, and we just thought, what a great idea to bring this to our City of FAR.
It is through these gates, it is through this bridge that we transport to the rest of the world.
We want this event to be bigger and better every year, just like with anything that we do here in the City of FAR. We want to make the most impact for our community and do the best that we can for them, and this event is no different.
And that's it, if you missed it, we really hope you join us next year now that this has become a tradition for the City of FAR. And of course, we are taking everyone's feedback under consideration, so next year we can do it bigger and better.
I want to see two avocado people fighting and make guacamole. I don't know how you're gonna make that happen.
And we'll call it the Smash.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to see that happen.
Yeah, we've had really, really good ideas that I, I believe, uh, Dr. Flores is, um, planning on starting a committee where we can discuss all of the ideas that we can incorporate for next year.
And did you guys have avocado run?
Avocado run?
Is that what you guys had, or was, what was the?
We had many contests, but, um, I'm not sure we had an avocado run.
Okay. Alright, well, it was very nice. Did, uh, how, did you get commentary from the, uh, public as far as the music and the performers?
Yes, 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 they do. They, uh, they also want tejano or music, uh, that's norteño, so we, we got a lot of feedback. We're actually trying to compile this and have a debriefing, and once we do, um, pass all of this information over to Dr. Flores. But yes, they definitely want to see, um, an entrance where people are immediately seeing those avocados, immediately, immediately seeing those tents, whether it's sampling of food or a product that's given out by the City of FAR, um, the music and just, we take all of this feedback under consideration. Of course, it's our first year, and we just learn from it, and then we just improve it.
I would also advise you, if, if, if that's what he wants, to get the culinary students from STC to maybe help you with the next, next year's, um, I don't know, menu, all these different types. I'm sure there's more than one way to utilize some avocado. I don't use it because I don't like it, but I'm sure most people do. But there's many ways you can utilize it in food. So get them to help you out with, with ideas, because they have students.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright.
It was great success, congratulations to everybody, and also ask all the staff, because I really want to know what our, what our leaders and staff, what they think about it and how they can improve it.
Absolutely, we will discuss that in a, um, we have our city, um, Special Events Meeting on Wednesday, and everyone's welcome, I believe it's at 3:00 PM, and we can get feedback from the public and internally. And this is usually where we take notes of what we can do for the next event, next year.
Well, congratulations to you in the, in the chamber, of course, where the review ship is getting it done.
Yes, we actually have Eloina here, do you want to mention anything regarding?
Oh, why didn't she present then? It was your event.
Hi, good afternoon. Eloina Gonzalez, Member of the Management of the Chamber for the Record. I just want to thank everyone for coming on board and assisting us with the Avocado Festival. It was one of a kind event, we had really great feedback. We incorporated also our members to be a part of this event. We had a lot of, you know, uh, good support from our board as well, as far as the city and commissioners. So we really appreciate everyone for coming on board and helping us out. We had really good feedback, we have about, like Ms. Judy already mentioned, 7,000 people, so we're excited and getting all the good notes and, you know, positive and what we can improve for next year. So, just thank you for everything, and we're very excited for next year.
Well, good, and of course, I know you, you guys are gonna be looking for a director soon, or, right?
That's correct.
For the chamber, okay. So good luck with that as well, but it looks like you guys are off to a great start.
Yeah.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much, we're looking forward to it.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to item six, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Okay. Motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? It passes, consent agenda. Okay, we're gonna go to the second session now? Okay. In accordance with Section five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it may meet and enclose non-public executive session to discuss items listed on the public portion of the meeting, uh, agenda in accordance with the following, and it is time four-thirty-eight. We're back, is five-oh-two?
Item seven-eight. Ordinances and Resolutions, Consideration and Action If Any on Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of the City of FAR Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series twenty-twenty-three and Levying an Annual Ad Valorem Tax Within the Limitations Prescribed by Law for the Payment of the Obligations, Setting Certain Parameters for Obligations, Authorizing a Pricing Officer to Approve the Amount, Interest Rates, Price, Redemption Provisions and Terms Thereof, and Certain Other Procedures and Provisions Related There Too.
Okay. So, motion for approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Item seven-B, Consideration and Action If Any on Resolution, Resolution Executing Amendment Number One to the Advance Funding Agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Dock Expansion Phase One Dry Units.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seven-C, Consideration and Action If Any on Resolution Executing Amendment Number One to the Advance Funding Agreement AFA with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Commercial Vehicle Parking Area.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Item seven-D, Consideration and Action If Any on Resolution Revising the City of FAR Investment Policy.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seven-E, Consideration and Action If Any on Resolution Authorizing the City of FAR to Participate in the Texas Range Public Funds Investment Pool.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seven-F, Consideration and Action If Any on Resolution Authorizing City of FAR Expenditures Reimbursement itself from proceeds of one or more tax-exempt financing for certain expenditures made and/or to be made in connection with the acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain capital improvements.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seven-G, Consideration and Action If Any on Resolution Appointing Two Regular Members to the Board of Adjustments. Staff recommends Carlos Ramírez and Andres Zuniga.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item eight-A, uh, Alfredo Alvarado owner has filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission a request for change of zone from single-family residential district to residential multi-family district. The property is legally described as being Lot forty-six, Block one, Hidalgo Park Estates subdivision, uh, FAR, Hidalgo County, Texas. The property is physically located at sixty-six twenty-one South St. Marie Drive.
Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item nine-A, Consideration and Action If Any on the Purchase of Radios for the Fire Department from Motorola Solutions, utilizing the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, Contract RA zero-five dash twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item nine-B, Consideration and Action If Any on the Purchase of Self-contained Breathing Apparatus for the Fire Department from Municipal Energy Services, utilizing the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, Contract EE zero-eight dash nineteen in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand, hundred and ten dollars.
Okay.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item nine-C, Consideration and Action If Any Authorizing FAR Public Utilities to Purchase a Korman Root Prime Assist Silent Pump Trailer Mounted from Precision, Pres- uh, gosh, Precision Pump Systems Through Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Contract six-seventy-two dash twenty-two.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item ten-A, Consideration and Action If Any on Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of FAR and the Kiowa Tribe Regarding Development of Broadband and Strategic Planning.
Okay. Can motion for approve?
Uh, motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item ten-B, Consideration and Action If Any on Change Order Number One in the Amount of five thousand, six hundred for Downtown Park Statue Project with deep in the, deepen the heart art foundry.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ten-C.
Item ten-C, Consideration and Action If Any on Change Order Number One in the Amount of eight thousand, five hundred for the Downtown Park Statue Project with Mata, Mata G Construction, Inc.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? It passes.
Item ten-D, Consideration and Action If Any Authorizing City Manager to Enter in a Service Contract with Hollis Religion Associates for Grand Management Planning and Writing Services.
Move to approve? Second.
That's gonna be hard. Can we just turn the lights off and go? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes.
Item ten-E, Consideration and Action If Any Authorizing City Manager to Renew the Agreement Between FAR EMS and HCA Gulf Coast Division, Real Grand Regional Hospital for Ground Non-Emergency and Emergency Transport.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, bow away, thank you, everybody.